Ubassutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumuslakeselfstorage.com.
Hi, I'm Neil Goforth of Comfort Keepers of Yuba-Sutter and Nevada Counties. Caring for elders or even yourself has challenges. Comfort Keepers of Yuba-Sutter and Nevada Counties can help you address today's issues and plan for tomorrow with in-home and specialized care for you or your family members. Call us at 530-749-8800. Comfort Keepers of Yuba-Sutter and Nevada Counties.
Director Blaser?
Here.
Director Fier?
Yes.
Director Messick?
Yes.
Director Pafford?
Here.
Director Matthews?
Director Bishop?
Would you all please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands by nation, by God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Public comment, Andy?
Public comment is an opportunity for members of the public to address the board of directors on any subject matter that is not on the meeting agenda and is within the board's subject matter jurisdiction. Public comment periods are limited to three minutes per person and the total amount of time for a public comment is 15 minutes. Persons participating by way of video conference or teleconference shall ensure their audio is muted at all times except when the board chair announces public comment periods. At those designated times, members of the public wishing to speak shall enable their audio and state their name for the record. When multiple members of the public wish to speak, the chair will determine the order of speakers and announce their names accordingly. To ensure proper conduct, the board reserves the right to mute the audio and video of any member of the public violating generally accepted principles and acronyms of official public meetings. We do not have any in-person, but we do have one online and it is... See, I'm going to unmute you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, this is a... Good morning, Charles Sharp, Oregon House. Last week about 20 people met on Stackhouse Lane, that's where the Artisan La Vina Bakery is, to discuss farming of firewise communities. Perhaps 50 or 60 properties are on their way to being a firewise community. I'm working on one for Concord Trail. There's no better way for the Yuba Water Agency to lead the way for firewise communities in the foothills than for the agency to be a part of one itself. Then, there's the North Yuba Water District, which we shall avoid as dragons be there, many dragons, and they bite. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, consent items. Move to approve. All second. Hey, motion's been made and seconded to approve the consent items, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Discussion items, item four. Bear Yuba Land Trust sponsorship. Aaron?
This one, okay. Good morning, directors, thank you for having me. My name's Erin Tarr, I'm the executive director of the Bear Yuba Land Trust. So I'm gonna tell you a little bit about our organization and the work we're doing in the Yuba watershed and then talk a little bit about the sponsorship request. Okay, so here is our board and staff. We have a board of 13 members and we have a staff of 10. So we're a relatively small group, but we get a lot of work done. We've been around for 34 years now, working in the Bear and Yuba watersheds to protect land, build trails, and connect people with nature. Okay, sorry about that. Here is our service area map. So we have a service area of about 1,000 square miles. You can see on the west side, reaching down to the goldfields, about Beal Air Force Base, and then on the east, we go up to the Donner Summit. We go up to the Middle Yuba River and then we have our urban core area in Grass Valley and Nevada City. So these blue circles you see, these are called our strategic focus areas. It's, each area has kind of a different goals, different funding, and different, you know, landowners and things that we're striving to do there. So we have currently protected over 26,000 acres of land. That includes 22,000 acres that are under conservation easement. And then we own 4,000 acres that is spread across 10 different nature preserves. We've also built over 50 miles of trail and we work, we do a lot of events and outreach to connect people with nature. So some of our main focus is conserving farming and ranching for food security. So we do a lot of rangeland conservation easement where the landowners still own the land and we're holding the development rights to ensure that it can continue forever in agriculture. And then we also, we own the largest organic farm in Nevada County, up on the San Juan Ridge Mountain Bounty Farm, where we're leasing that land then back to the farmers with a long-term lease so that they have land security. We also manage our lands, so the lands that we own, a lot of them are near neighborhoods. So we're doing a lot of fuel management and trying to keep those areas fire-safe as well as kind of balancing that with public recreation and wildlife habitat. And then a big focus in the Nevada City and Grass Valley area in particular is trail connectivity. But we're also doing that in the Yuba watershed and I'll talk a little bit about one of our projects here in a moment. But this is, this is that urban core area where we really, we work on getting trail easements to connect trail systems together and make more connections to nature there. We have a couple of big partnership projects that are in process right now. So we've gotten funding from the Department of Conservation. One is the Central Sierra Agricultural and Cultural Protection Project. So we're partnering with the Nissinon, the Nevada City Rancheria, to work on agricultural and cultural land protection in this region in particular, the Blue Oakwoodland and Rangeland region. So that's eastern Yuba County and western Nevada County. You can see here, the yellow background that you see, that's the wildlife corridor, a connectivity corridor. So we're, we're really trying to connect from the Bear River to the Yuba River and then up the South Yuba where that wildlife corridor, it, you know, is. And you can see some of the projects in Yuba County, the Large Richards Ranch Conservation Easement. Ace Ranch is right on the border there. And then another big partnership project is the Beal Air Force Base Strategic Conservation Plan. So we're working with the Sutter Buttes Regional Land Trust, Trust for Public Land, and Beal to kind of determine how they want to continue with conservation around the base. So some of our projects that are in process in Yuba County right now, the Cottage Creek Trail. So this trail, it goes from the campground, I believe that Yuba Water Agency restored a few years ago on the west side of Bullards Bar. So it connects from that campground down to our Rice's Crossing Preserve. It's a three-mile trail on Plumas National Forest and it'll connect then from that campground all the way down to the Yuba River where we have trails on our Rice's Crossing Preserve. And then we're also, like I mentioned, the Richards Ranch Agricultural Conservation Easement. We're working with Trust for Public Land right now on trying to get funding to protect that 5,300 acres on the Yuba River. And then a couple of projects that are completed in Yuba County. Just in December last year, we closed on our Ames Open Space Conservation Easement. This is a 60-acre project in Oregon House. The picture you see here is the Lazaga Land and Livestock Agricultural Conservation Easement. So this is just north of Beal Air Force Base, Hamilton-Smartsville Road and that contains 4,000 acres of land there that's protected. And then our Shepperill Hill Conservation Easement, also in Oregon House, and that's a 10-acre meadow. And then a little more about our partnership. So this was at our Conservation Award and Gratitude Breakfast, where you all received the Partner, our Partner of the Year Award. So it was great to have Willie and Don there, representing the Water Agency and just really letting us show you all how thankful we are for the partnership work that we've been doing. So a lot of that work has been focused on this Rice's Crossing Preserve. This is a 3,000-acre preserve along the Yuba River. So you can see here just south of Bullards Bar, all the way down to Inglebright in Yuba County and Nevada County, where you all have funded a restoration project along the Yuba Rim Trail on the north side there. So this is a photo of, we did a bunch of pile burning and thinning and then we're doing a meadow restoration project as well. And then we're also partners on a much larger scale forest project that will treat some of this land as well that you all funded. So, you know, a lot of the work that we do is dependent on volunteers. We have a lot of volunteers that work with us and help this work happen. Over 9,400 hours of volunteer labor in the past year. And then we have a lot of focus on this connecting with nature program, really focused on youth in nature. So just opportunities to get families and youth and really people of all abilities outdoors. Here's some photos of that program, putting them to work. This is one of our big events coming up is Nature Fest, a free event for all ages at our trails. So that'll be happening in a couple of weeks. We also do these Equitracks on some of our conservation easements, getting people out to, you know, experience these lands in different ways. And then what we're here to talk about is the sponsorship request. So in the past years, you all have sponsored us in different ways. You are trail adopters on our Yuba Rim Trail that's on Rice's Crossing Preserve. You've sponsored Nature Fest and Celebration of Trails in different ways. So this year, we're kind of doing it in a, in a different format. So the sponsorship request is a $5,000 request and these are all the different things that would be sponsored through that request. So, and I'll talk more about each of them in just a minute. But our street party sponsorship, our Summer Star Hike Challenge, and Art in Nature. So the month of June, we do a big Celebration of Trails Month. So, so the whole month, we are, you know, trying to get people outdoors. We've got these different events happening. The Summer Star Hike Challenge, this is something we just started last year where we partner with a local art group that creates these stars and then we hang them all over different trails. When people register, they get a map of the stars and then go out and try to find them and get entered into raffle, raffle drawings. So your logo would be associated with all of the stars so there would be some visibility in this program. So we're planning to do 17 stars this year on 17 different trails, some in Yuba County, some in Nevada County. And then we also do, we started this last year as well, Art in Nature Program. So we commission local artists to install these temporary art installations along the trails. So this year, we're gonna do two again, but just closed yesterday. So we have some art submissions we're looking through. And then at the end of the month, we celebrate with our street party. So this is in downtown Nevada City. Last year, you all had a booth there as well and that would, you know, be an option this year if you wanted to. But just bringing people together, we have a band and a lot of recreation partners there just to celebrate the month. That's where we do our raffle drawings and get, just get people together. So yeah, ultimately, you know, what we're doing is protecting land and connecting community in Yuba County and Nevada County. And we just thank you for the partnership over the years.
All right, any questions?
Quite an active...
Through the chair, what? Go ahead.
Sorry about that, I didn't see the chair. Quite an active program you've got there. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah, it's a wonderful organization, wonderful goals. I'm glad you have all the volunteers. I'm gonna try to get my son involved and his family because they're very much into exactly what you're doing. So thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Through the chair. Thanks for the presentation, great to learn more about everything you guys are doing. And I need to add to my spring list of things to do, a hike on the Yuba Rim Trail. So that looks great, it's beautiful.
Yes, awesome.
I have two questions for you, Aaron. First off, is Cascade Canal Trail your guys' trail?
So it's, we have trail easements along it, on portions of it.
Okay.
So I mean, it's an NID canal.
Yeah.
They just have maintenance easements. So we try to then put trail easements over the maintenance easements.
Okay.
Because ultimately, landowners can block those canals.
It's one of my favorite hikes, that trail, because it's along the canal and you see what they've done, what the NID's done with a mixed-use ditch, you know, open ditch and some gunite and some piping and, and it's really neat.
Yeah, it is.
From the Water Agency standpoint, similar to some of the stuff North Yuba's doing. My other question is, I recently got into e-biking. Is there gonna be any e-bike trails in any of this?
Yeah, so, well, we don't allow or not allow e-bikes at this point on our trails. So I mean, if it's a biking trail, you know, e-bikes can go on it as well.
All right.
Yeah, and then Pines to Mines, I don't know if you've heard of that trail. That one's gonna connect Truckee to Nevada City.
Oh yeah.
So that's, e-bikes are allowed on that one as well, class one.
I'm gonna start in Truckee and go down.
Yeah, that's the way to do it.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Would you make that trail if you didn't have an e-bike?
No. That's always hunting.
That's why I got me cars.
Okay, I'm gonna, anybody gonna make a motion? Or just call for a vote? How would we do that?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, thank you. Okay, item five, Yuba River Accord, Willie.
Yeah. As you know, the original Yuba Accord was approved and implemented in 2008 and two of the agreements expire in, on December 31st, 2025. So to extend the accord, we need to submit a water right change petition to the State Water Resources Control Board to propose a change or an extension till 2050. And we have that all prepared. And this action today would approve the general manager, me, to file that change petition and pay the $103,000 filing fee. In addition, next week, or at the end of this week, we will put on the street the Supplemental Environmental Impact Report. This is the SEQA document that accompanies the overall extension of the accord. And then in the future, we'll be bringing the two documents that, the two contracts that will also be extended. That's the Water Purchase Agreement with DWR and the Conjunctive Use Agreement with the member units. This, today's action is the first step in basically extending the accord until 2050.
All right, any questions of the directors?
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, thank you. Item six, North Yuba Water District Grant Request, Willie.
Yeah, so last week, we received a request from North Yuba Water District to help them do some canal repairs on the Forbes Town Ditch. We've invested in this in a similar manner in the past. Specifically, last year, we helped them with the Hell for Stout Flume siphon construction. They got that done last fall. They've identified five locations that are in need of repair in order to deliver full deliveries to their Dobbins, Oregon House customers this year. Their estimate is $865,000. They'll perform a like-kind contribution to this work. This will increase that canal capacity by 2 CFS, which doesn't sound like a lot, but for the customers up in the foothills, 2 CFS is a lot and will make the difference for, hopefully, full deliveries for their customers this year.
Right, any questions of the directors?
No, so moved.
I have a, maybe a comments more than questions and I have a little bit of concern. I asked for the report, you just recently did an engineering report to identify these, this work that's needed. And I don't have any question that it's needed and, and it fits in our mission and, you know, water infrastructure in Yuba County is what we need to invest in. And my concern is, reading through that report is, there were a number of other sites where, you know, just paraphrasing, it said, "We need to keep an eye on these spots." You know, "When we actually send that amount of flow down the canal, we may have more problems in other places." That's a real brief summary of what I read. And I guess what I would like to see, because we, we have been very supportive of continuing to work on this, this canal and I would think that we'll continue to be. But I think it'd be good to see a real comprehensive plan, you know, if, if it sounded like, reading through that report, and I'm sure there were meetings that came along with that and you got more communication than what I could read through there. But it sounded like it would be a good idea to have those people go back down through there when it is at full flow and really take a hard look and see what additional work. It sounds to me like some additional work's gonna be needed fairly soon. And so a good comprehensive plan, I guess, and what, what we need to do going forward.
So I would like to also make comments that they are in the position where they're gonna start to accept new water applications. So they are doing a very good job of trying to get more water out in their district. And I think when we have, water development is one of our key issues, that this is an area that they're focused on. And to me, they're doing an unbelievably good job. But I think they could tell, tell both of us what you're doing in the future.
So in response to Director Bishop's question there, we do have Leona Harris here, the general manager of North Yuba Water District, prepared to answer questions, so here she is. And I'd like to paraphrase Director Bishop's question and just ask Leona to address your plans for a comprehensive assessment of the Forbes Town Ditch.
So we are continuously working and monitoring the Forbes Town Ditch. We are trying to come up with a plan to permanently fix the ditch. That was also part of the grant that I'm asking for is for Gannett Fleming to come back and walk the whole ditch and give us an idea of what it will take to just permanently fix it. But that's gonna take years to get it completely finished. But our guys are up there every day. We've started a maintenance, you know, they check it every day, they walk it twice a week. We have someone go from the top to the bottom, always looking for bad spots or trees that have fallen. So we have taken a lot of interest in maintaining our infrastructure. It's, it had been a long time since it had been done. So it's a very large job all of a sudden. But we're doing everything we can to make sure that we have a plan in place. Gannett Fleming is helping us with that. So it will continue to be that way.
And I didn't, I didn't mean to be critical of what you've done since you've been around. And, you know, I'm very impressed with how much work has gotten done in a short time. I guess what I'm, what I'm hoping for is that, as opposed to maybe every two or three months, we're approving some more Band-Aids that we, we get, we get to a point where we have a plan that, you know, over some period of time, we're gonna get that thing up to, up to, into great shape. I know it's 160 years old or something, that, that canal, so.
Well, and that's what we're doing with Gannett Fleming, doing the analyst on the ditches. They can tell us exactly what it will need because, you know, I, I'm not an engineer. I don't exactly know, I need someone to tell me what needs to be done. And, you know, it might take a few years to get it completely done, but it'll at least give us steps to go by, you know, that we can do a year at a time.
Great.
And the district does appreciate all your help and support. I just wanted to throw that out there. Without you guys, most, none of this would have been able to be accomplished.
Great.
Through the chair?
Yes.
This is just an observation, I'm just thinking back where we were, say, two or three years ago, compared to where we are today. Amazing transformation, so thank you.
Okay, motion's been made to approve, do I have a second? Charlie seconded that, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, thank you. Okay, we're gonna go straight into closed session because we're under a time constraint to get...
Sorry, John?
Yeah.
Or Director Messick, there was a public comment, one moment.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
We can hear you.
This is Charles Sharp. At the last Water District meeting, it was said that they would not be able to provide any new customers this year. And that's all I know, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna go right into closed session and we're gonna come back into open session for managers' report and directors' report. So.
Recording stopped.
Karen needs to catch plane. I was supposed to pick up the plane.
Ubassutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumuslakeselfstorage.com.
Hi, I'm Neil Goforth of Comfort Keepers of Yuba-Sutter and Nevada Counties. Caring for elders or even yourself has challenges. Comfort Keepers of Yuba-Sutter and Nevada Counties can help you address today's issues and plan for tomorrow with in-home and specialized care for you or your family members. Call us at 530-749-8800. Comfort Keepers of Yuba-Sutter and Nevada Counties.
You are listening to a 94.3 KXYS broadcast of the Uva City Symphony's Patriotic Music Concert.
So good, I think.
Play some music here and...
So good, I think. Okay, John Murray, this one's for you.
Yes, I heard this coming from the phone. That's a lot of good singing.
You are listening to a 94.3 KXYS broadcast of the Uba City Symphony's Panteiotic Music Concert.
UbaSutter.live's local government livestreams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com.
Hi, I'm Neil Goforth of Comfort Keepers of Uba Sutter and Nevada Counties. Caring for elders or even yourself has challenges. Comfort Keepers of Uba Sutter and Nevada Counties can help you address today's issues and plan for tomorrow with in-home and specialized care for you or your family members. Call us at 530-749-8800. Comfort Keepers of Uba Sutter and Nevada Counties.
On five.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
You are listening to a 94.3 KXYS broadcast of the Uba City Symphony's Panteiotic Music Concert.
Okay, we're back from closed session. And maybe reportable items from closed session? Nothing reportable? Nothing to report? Okay, managers' report.
Okay, so I'll make this quick since today's meeting is long. Things are going well. We're slightly above average on precipitation and snowpack. New Bullards Bar is at 845,000 acre feet. We're slightly over our approved deviation with the Army Corps of 45,000 acre feet, but we're allowed to be because April 1st, our flood pool starts to increase by about 3,000 acre feet a day. So we're going to fill the reservoir and kind of climb with that deviation. Things are going well at Bullards. All units are online and performing well. We had a little bit more revenue in February than our forecast. That's power generation revenue. We have unsettled weather coming up. Kind of these late season storms are a little bit abnormal, but they're not necessarily good for rice farmers, but they're good for snowpack and inflow. And on the finance side, we're going to switch who we use for our annual audit. We're going to use MUN, it's called MUN. Okay, MUN CPAs of Sacramento. We went through a proposal process and MUN CPAs was the audit group selected. So we'll start using them for our next year's audit. So for the year ending June 30th, 2024. On communications and community update, most of the media mentions over the last few weeks have been about reservoir levels, fishing and elections. The latest in our sponsored news and review series on flood risk was published. It was a print version of the video we showed you last week focused on how we operate and all that goes into the decisions around spillway releases at Bullards. We also released a new video in our series Beneath the Surface featuring our crews working to replace the exciter at Colgate during a recent outage. And if you haven't seen that video, please check it out. It's a great tribute to our awesome team at the plant and a shout out to Alex Boss for putting that video together. Our upcoming sponsorships include the Kokonye Fishing Derby at Bullards on April 6th, an event celebrating 20 years of Sierra Nevada Conservancy on the 16th, the United Way's Fabulous 50 Suare on the 20th, Pioneer Days in Smartsville on the 26th, and United Food Sources BBQ Festival on April 28th. Our next board meetings are May 7th. We have a Board of Directors and an ABP meeting. You'll notice that I didn't say April 16th. It's because we have three directors that won't be here. We will hold the, is it the 30th? We will hold the 30th available for a board meeting. That's the fifth Tuesday, so it would be an off-schedule board meeting. But if we have any business we need to bring to you, we'll hold that kind of available for a board meeting if necessary. That's all I have.
To the chair, the snowpack I heard this morning is 110%. Will that make our income for the next four months of this year better than projected?
I don't know what we projected, Charlie, but we're slightly above average on storage, precipitation and snowpack. So above average in those areas lends itself to a good generation year. It'll be a good generation generally.
All right. Directors' reports. Andy?
I would like to see that there, the lawyers would allow us to have a review of the Agency Act that points out the restrictions on what we can say, what we can do with the money that the agency generates. And every once in a while, we step outside the boundaries. And it would be nice if we visited that for a special, for all the new people or anybody who is having a confusion as to what they can say. And that's about it.
Good idea. Don?
I've used up a lot of my comments already, but on April 11th, I'm looking forward to Yuba County is doing a dinner presentation of Yuba County on the horizon. It's going to be down at the airport to celebrate business and prosperity in Yuba County. I'm sure it's going to be a great positive presentation. If you haven't been invited yet, the RSVP was by a couple of days ago. If you can go, I would suggest it. Thanks.
They would probably let us go.
The Ice Company had their gala a couple of weeks ago. We were a sponsor. We had a table there. Did people come? Did any of you guys go? I was busy, so I hope you guys had a good time. Great entertainment. We had a ribbon cutting for a business opening up in Yuba County. We have a new process by which we bring the Tricky Yuba book. It was a hit. I had multiple requests for it, so everybody really, really wants our book. They have a little Shark Tank activity going on yesterday and today, this morning for economic development in the area. Businesses gave their pitch about why they should be the winner of the $10,000 prize in view of the fact that we do that economic report as part of our overview. Correct me, what was our, what's the phrase, what's the phrasing that we had for that? No, 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 from the water agency, we did an economic That was what it was, right? And so in that same vein, looking for businesses that are going to be sponsored, started in Yuba and they can provide services to the water agency might be something to partner with on that. You guys recently sponsored a training that went well. We had a full room from the water agency crew, I think, for the last segment. So good stuff. And then, as mentioned, cap to cap is coming up where we're going to convince everybody that capital to give us lots of grant money. Looking forward to it.
Thank you. Charlie?
I know that Willie has been extremely busy. We had talked about community aggregate bringing us up to speed sometime this spring, so I assume that'll be on the agenda. Also, I'd like to again compliment North Yuba on the unbelievable work they've done and doing and projected to do even better.
Great, Wayne?
I just want to compliment Terry on that training that Seth just
Businesses gave their pitch about why they should be the winner of the $10,000 prize in view of the fact that we do that economic report as part of our overview. Correct me, what was the phrase, what's the phrasing that we had for that? No, 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 from the water agency, we did an economic... That was what it was, right? With, and so in that same vein, looking for businesses that are going to be sponsored, started in Yuba, and they can provide services to the water agency might be something to partner with on that. You guys recently sponsored a training that went well. We had a full room from the water agency crew, I think, for the last segment, so good stuff. And then, as mentioned, cap to cap is coming up where we're going to convince everybody that capital to give us lots of grant money. Looking forward to it.
Thank you. Charlie?
I know that Willie has been extremely busy. We had talked about community aggregate bringing us up to speed sometime this spring, so I assume that'll be on the agenda. Also, I'd like to again compliment North Yuba on the unbelievable work they've done and doing and projected to do even better.
Great. Wayne?
I just want to compliment Terry on that training that Seth just mentioned that we had last week, and I think there were four of us board members there. And the one thing I want to encourage her to keep those up, we talked a little bit after the meeting about what the subjects might be. And then I think as board members, we could help make some calls and drum up some more attendance for it because I think we could do a lot of good creating some better functioning boards in the county and all the special districts and school districts and city councils. It'd be nice to see some more participations.
Thank you. I didn't make that training. I was planning on it, but I was very sick and I chose to not intimidate the rest of you guys, so I stayed home from that. So I wanted to bring up again, like I did at our board meeting last week, Pioneer Days in Smartsville is coming up, April 27th. I'm looking for volunteers to be greeters at the both entrances to town in maybe two-hour shifts or so throughout the day. Last couple of years, I've done it all day and then takes away, you can't really go and see what's going on. And they give tours of the Blue Point Mine, which is on Yuba Water Agency property, so I think we should support them. And last, I also want to thank Seth for taking that book and thank staff for putting that together. DeeDee's already gone, I guess. So it was an idea that we had to, when there's a ribbon cutting in Yuba County, that we take like a raffle prize, and she suggested the Tricky Yuba. I think it was her, was it you, Mandy? One of the two of them. And I was sick, so Seth took it and said it was a very good success. The other thing, Congressman Kylie was here last Monday, the 25th. He met with Brown's Valley Irrigation District, and then they called at the last minute and wanted me to fill in about an hour's worth of time at the Sheriff's Department. And I called Leona and her and Marika came down and went over their plans at North Yuba, and they're putting in a request for some water meter grant money federally. So hopefully that'll work out and he'll be able to put a name with a face with them. That's it. So, yep. Any other? Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.
Yubasutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske Truck Rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com.
Hi, I'm Neil Goforth of Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter, and Nevada Counties. Caring for elders or even yourself has challenges. Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter, and Nevada Counties can help you address today's issues and plan for tomorrow with in-home and specialized care for you or your family members. Call us at 530-749-8800. Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter, and Nevada Counties.